What's that? Select war meeting, June 7th.
Uh, 6 o'clock.
Um, we don't have any minutes to approve. Police department will be next meeting. The road agents on its way. I guess we'll skip to the office reopening. We definitely want to open the office.
No, I think in conjunction with the memo that came out about the going back to public meetings and so forth, I think that the timing for the reopening of the office in conjunction with that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So...
Can we officially open it and say Monday?
Uh, there's no reason why we can't. Now, we can request that there, we can augment our signs to say if you're fully vaccinated, no mask is required. However, you know, to make it short, you simply say non-vaccinated or not fully vaccinated individuals must be masked. Unfortunately, you cannot ask the question, so it's an honor system thing. But you can say that occupants of the building must maintain social distances of six feet or greater.
So instead of just saying that or addition to that, can we also put a maximum occupancy on the waiting room of like one or two?
Yeah, two, three.
Two, three. Three people will comfortably fit in the room. One's at the, one's at the window. Three can wait in there and maintain that six feet, no more than that. You can, but you can't have somebody walk through and not violate that six foot space.
How about the conference room here? 10?
Sorry.
How about the conference room here?
Here, 4-4.
10, 12?
Yeah, I haven't really spaced it out, but I would imagine you could probably fit 15. I mean, you can do two rows, stagger it and so forth. If these tables were out here folded up against the wall, you could probably do a row of eight in the back and a row of seven in front and still maintain the six feet against the wall, six feet out. That still leaves almost six feet to the table. And if we go the full width of the room.
If we were 15?
No, you're not gonna get eight. One, two, three, four, five. I think you can get six. What would you guess this room is, 30 feet, 35 feet?
I've measured it before and I can't remember.
So even six is 12?
It's a little longer than my dining room.
You'd get three.
A little wider than.
I say over the 15.
All right.
We can get something, we can have some here.
Well, exactly, and including those on the table. So maximum occupancy of 15 at six foot distances. Does that sound safe?
So make a motion and we go forward to those?
Yes, I can bet.
All in favor?
Aye.
So can we also update the website? Yeah? Thank you.
Let the people stop calling and ask questions.
Oh, speaking of the website, the road name list is still showing the old list on the website?
Yes.
Okay. I know we had approved the updated list back in May and Nancy had distributed that to the dining board members along with the attached couple pages about scenic roads that you gave us right after that meeting. And everything was updated, the annotation about the date that it had been updated was on there. But the website still shows the 2005 file.
Thanks. Want to skip to the two boys?
Yes, absolutely.
John, which one? This is March, I'm sorry, this is March, this is John.
Hi, this is John Ashley.
Nice to meet you.
Time to miss very little here.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yeah. So my understanding is that you're looking to build a...
We're looking to develop our highway department, basically.
Right, and it's in an existing gravel pit type of...
Yes, basically it is. We're looking possibly for a building, facilities, water, sewer power. It's got power now, it's got some water, it's got point.
Okay. It's got a point.
Yeah. So to make it compatible with the building, that's kind of gonna look at the future. We need something to go to town with, some sort of a site plan. Can we do it, can we not do it, you know, in that territory?
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're looking for some help on.
Yeah, and then to take that a little bit further, ultimately, you know, the full set of plans of what the building's gonna look like and that kind of thing. So, but right now, I think the first step is the site plan. A, is it even possible?
Right. A concept plan. So it sounds like you do intend to do a zoning permit for it?
Yeah.
Okay. And would you fully comply with the zoning rules? Is that the goal?
Yeah.
Okay, because I think you have the option of not on both of those. But, okay, but a lot of communities choose to.
Yeah, we definitely try to do what we can.
Okay. So that's, those are a couple of my early questions. So, and you mentioned that you have some sort of survey that...
This is it.
I hope I don't answer... There's a plant on the table.
I'm pretty sure this is the latest one we hold. This is just a bunch of copies, right, March?
Yes.
This is the existing office burn.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so this is the main, it's dragged in.
Yeah, the road comes in, goes down here. This is pit, pit.
Gravel piles.
Gravel pile and things like that. Sand pile. With originally John, you may want to step in on this one too. This is John, champignies are really good for them.
Do you want to sit up here too?
Not yet.
Okay.
Can you give them a rough idea of what you guys at this thought you might like to see the building?
Okay, so as soon as you, have you been to the site at all?
No.
No, just on Google.
So as soon as you drive into the main entryway?
Yep.
Right there, because to the left, uh, to the right and to the left, to the left, we've been excavating the sand out of there and then to the right is where the existing shed is now.
Yep.
Where the existing shed is now, we're approximately three to four feet above water table. So we're doing preliminary visits with people. Everybody keeps saying, geez, this would be nice up here at this grade where you can still work off down low, add it higher, same grade as the road going in. That's, that was what they were saying. And still leave the small brush line between the state road and the, uh, where the facility's going, just for privacy.
Right. Okay. So...
When you drive straight in?
Yep.
The road then forks, you're basically talking right at that fork?
Uh, in that vicinity, because the town property goes quite lengthy. It goes in quite ways from, from, from the brush line.
Yep.
As soon as you pull in there.
Okay, that makes sense.
There's, there's... The, it's granular sand, two to three feet, then we're running into a silty vein. So that's part of the, I've been very cautious on where we've been pulling the sand out for winter sand.
Right.
Because I don't, the last thing we want to do is haul stuff in.
Right.
But there, if you drive in there, there is a mountain of loamy ditching material that needs to be moved, that's right in my way. It'll be in the building's way, but if you're gonna move it, you might as well screen it. They use it for shoulder work, sloping, that type of thing.
Right.
But...
And that's what you've, you've been piling that from digging along?
I haven't added anything to the pile, that's a pile that I inherited.
Okay.
When I took possession.
But it's originless from along the road, so the ditches?
Yeah. And stripping the site to get the sand that I've been excavating.
Yep, right. Makes sense. And from what you've seen, it's two or three feet to water in that area.
Oh, no, no, no. So for instance, your elevation has gotta be at least 13, you have at least 10 feet.
Okay.
You can go down 10 to 12 feet before you have water on that grade down.
Where are you talking?
Where I'm talking at.
Okay. But it's two or three feet down by...
Yeah, where that shed is. Yes.
Okay.
At least.
So that's more of the, that's an older part of the pit where the...
Yep, that, there's actually some original grade in there. Years ago, the state had excavated material out of there. So that was, we followed that grade, excavating the sand out.
Yep. Okay. And you're actively using the, the sand there?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I bet there's, there has to be, and again, we've run into a silty area. So I mean, I would have to object, there's at least 10 to 15 years worth of sand left there. Every winter's different, so if...
Yeah.
We, I always say if you can have 5,000 yards, manufacture 5,000 yards yearly and keep banking it, because 5,000 yards doesn't go very far with a, you know, a weak ice storm.
Right.
But this year, from what I understand, we've cut that in half. So we'll only excavate maybe 2,000 yards.
Okay.
I'd say 2,500, something like that.
Yep. And this facility would be, you have this in mind for, for the vehicles and what? For material too? Or you wouldn't pile, it's not equipped to...
Nothing to house winter sand or salt.
Okay. And how many people would, should it be, you know, officially staffed for, like a...
I would say six anyhow.
Okay, six.
Well, yeah, we currently have three, but let's plan on growth.
Well, partly, you know, when you look back at their plan that they came up with, it was roughly the manager, two full-time and a couple of part-times. Right, you're in that range.
So do you, do you already have an idea of what kind of building you're thinking of?
Well, there's a, a, select one were presented by the highway committee and...
It was a steel buffer building, I believe.
Yep, okay. And so that'll, so really you have a square footage that you'd be happy with?
They just kind of...
They ballparked it.
Ballparked it. And we really need to sit down eventually and lay everything out. Which really did.
Okay.
We used other municipalities for reference.
Yep, that's pretty common. Especially with like sand and salt sheds too. One won't like this town.
So with, with putting in the new facility, we really wanna bear that in mind, that there needs to be some sort of containment for that, for the winter sand.
Okay.
Placement, I think, would be crucial, because you don't wanna put the sand, salt, burn. You don't, you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
That, that is a state requirement that the town will have to be compliant with.
Okay.
At some point.
And do you, so you store salt there now?
We mix ours, uh, sand with salt, yes.
So for the concept, for this initial concept plan, I haven't, I haven't checked your zoning rules. Wasn't sure if you would want them, I would them first. But I mean, we would, we would work up a site plan using this. We could either use the site name that you've come up with or we could put, you know, with, either with input from an architect or just our own. We could come up with a building, a conceptual building layout. I don't know if that's something you need yet or... Like, is it gonna have, just for instance, what's, you know, is it gonna, it's gonna have a bathroom?
I have a bathtub, we can offer it.
Shower or no shower?
Yep.
Entrance from, you know...
Public entrance at all.
Uh, lockers.
We're gonna go, there it is.
It, it has to be state compliant, so it has to be handicap accessible and all that.
Right.
So this, this is just me and a wet drink.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, yep.
Pardon the film.
Yep.
Anyway, so we've got one, two, three, four bays. This is all workshops and storage space in the back. You've got a public entrance here, you've got a meet, uh, office for the manager, you've got a meeting space, you've got a locker room and a bathroom and laundry.
Okay.
Do you want to find your plan?
All right, so if we...
Committee? It's a 55, 120.
I thought maybe it was one of you guys that picked it up.
That's, that's the one I was playing with.
17 is the height to the...
Correct.
To the top of the roof?
Yep.
Yep, to the peak. So let me know like this, and go back to garage and... That's what it looks like.
They had a rough mission with the garage and stuff.
Okay.
Right. This particular company, again, this is, all you get from them is a shell. That's it.
Yep.
Right, and it's, and maybe a slab, I'm not sure. Right, but there's that little office bump out, right? I think, no, I don't think that's included in it. Right, so this is four bays and that office space.
Right.
I just flipped it around. But the idea is that it's 55, 120, 17.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
But yeah, we were... And maybe we don't have the money to put in all the facilities at once, but having the, the space to do so?
Right.
You know, at a, at a future time?
Right.
Would be great.
So maybe you, maybe you set up the vehicles first and then the people? Or the other way around?
I, you know, we, you know, and, and again, whether or not, and how we do this and how we go about putting this project together is, everything's on the table.
Right.
So for all I know, we're gonna end up with, you know, here's a realistic approach to getting an insulated building with heat, water and sewer. But nothing else. You've got no walls, you've got nothing, and we can put together, I don't know if we're gonna do like a, a town-wide, you know, barn raising thing where we, where we gather a whole bunch of people together to, to build out this interior? Or we end up just hiring somebody? I don't know. But I don't, I don't wanna leave anything off the table, any idea off the table as far as how we get to this endpoint.
And let's see overhead later. So you have power there. Is it, do you know if it's gonna be adequate power?
Yeah, we do.
You already have what you need there?
Yep.
And I see edge of wet area. Sounds like it's not an official wetland delineation, but...
The wetland, the conservation commission did go down and mark it up.
Okay.
So whether or not there, they've got engineering qualifications to do so?
Right.
I don't know.
Well, I've got usually hired the guy to do it.
Did they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, you know, for the initial concept plan, you know, to work around that is fine.
Which I think is helpful.
Is that feet or what? Yeah, I guess, pad and feet and that.
Just one style of thing.
Yeah, so I think you have everything you need to put together a simple concept plan of, or maybe a couple of alternatives you might want?
Yep. It'll be, what's the cost of doing something like this?
Right. Well, I'll follow up and give you a, a proposal for that. But for the initial concept plan, we try and keep it pretty...
Pretty basic.
Pretty basic and just make sure, you know, it's to work on the concept. Make sure you're happy with something. You don't spend extra time getting it ready for final design or things like that. But you have space for a number of parking spaces. You have circulation planned for maybe a couple of building locations or looking to build in a different way.
Sure. Well, having it, I think the way you, the way John was describing it makes it super easy. It's just straight in, straight out for all those vehicles. There's not a lot of maneuvering and you don't have to finagle your way around anything to get in and out of this place.
Right, if you can go right here?
Yeah.
Then you've already got the turnaround you're already using.
Yep.
Go in and out.
You still put your sand down below?
Yep.
Storage your pipe, your materials and...
And at this point, do you want us to do at least some test pits for the, for the separate plan?
Oh, you can get it anywhere there.
Right.
Your way.
So we'll just make an assumption on size for the concept plan then? Based on the, that we know the kind of material that's there?
Yep.
Okay. And do they, did they pick up where the well point is?
It's down beside the office, I don't, I don't see it.
It's right beside the utility pole that's down there, right beside the office.
I'm sure you did.
Right in this? Okay.
That got plenty of pressure going or is it...
Yep.
Weed or...
Oh, it's perfect.
It's, it's terrific. So maybe, I don't know, can you guys figure out my account in a minute, come out of it or...
Yeah.
And see if that's gonna work for the building or...
Yep, we could, we could test the yield a little while. What, do you know?
I would, I don't think I would count on that, because they're, being a commercial facility like that, I think you're gonna need more volume of water than what that point will provide.
Okay, all right. So I think for the concept plan, we would just pick a well location that works with the, with the landfill location. The, the amount of area that you disturb to build the project would just, would determine whether you need an alteration of terrain permit. If you're up here, we may not be in a shoreline area. If you're 250 feet from what's the shoreline?
You've got that.
Yeah. It looks like it's a little, maybe 400 or something like that. So then your square footage of needing an alteration of terrain permit goes up when you're outside that. So maybe a, they give you almost, they give you about two and a half acres of disturbance when you're outside the shoreline. Yeah, so we would, we would basically put together a plan that shows, we'll use the, a square footage like...
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other option that I had from that same was only three bays. And I don't know if we need three or four.
Okay.
That's... But the same idea was...
The concept of the building that was presented was, I think they had started with three and then it was to be enough room to add on.
Yep.
Each of the bays, because we did it in steel, the guys that we talked to said they could just add a bay, add a bay.
Okay. Yep.
With the idea of having an office for the supervisor?
Right.
A, a, a space for a meeting or training, right? Bathroom slash locker room. And I don't know with New Hampshire law, do we have to have a male and female separate type thing or how's that work?
At this point, I don't know.
Probably goes ahead.
Yep.
You can't stand other also.
Yeah.
So just well done?
I don't know.
Or two, that just come from...
I mean, you can't get away with, you know, literally, but you know, and then again, and there's one, you know, ADA compliance, right? Even though it's a commercial building and so forth. You know, do you have to make one of the bathrooms ADA compliant? I don't know these rules.
I, yeah. Well, there's a handful of people can tell.
Yeah, I was gonna say let's down the road anyway.
Yep. That would be past the concept form. I was just looking at the notes because this, I'm wondering what's, what goes along with this?
Right of way.
Railway lines to be eliminated.
Is this, you know... This whole lot will purchase from the state.
Right.
But that lot behind it has a right of way across this, doesn't it?
And it comes in...
Here's the rail over in the way.
Down by the...
It goes straight through here.
And there's a drive?
Yeah, there's a driveway.
It's that spot.
This is the right of way here. It goes into the back, if you follow the road straight out, that goes to that back little turn camp thing with the telephone pole and all that.
I don't, I don't think, I don't believe there was ever a right of way.
I don't think that's right, I think the right of way is down.
It is, it's down near the Blackwater Bridge.
Yep.
They used to, they used to use that as a...
Well, it's right next to the, the little breaks.
Yes.
Literally, yeah. And it does kinda snake around and it's very difficult to get an ambulance down that road.
I bet it is.
Having driven one down there.
They're improving that road this year.
Oh, they're probably, okay. But yeah, that's, 'cause if the, if the main drag was it, then we wouldn't be able to lock it.
Right.
And they can't go into...
There was questions to that originally.
I have, I remember, yeah.
I don't know if anybody researched that.
Yeah, I think that...
Yep, and then we revealed it was on the, the far edge. Which is where, which is how they're getting in and out now.
Yeah, that's actual driveway. But people were using that for the road.
The, the house that used to be out there, they used to drive off Route 4 and go down through White Oak.
Okay.
And from what I understand, that was never an illegal driveway. It was never, they should never, they should never have had access to that. So now the, the people that owned the little camp bought that adjacent lot where the house was and they tore down the house. So they, they have no...
Issues.
No purpose to use it and no plans to rebuild or anything of that sort.
Yeah, but still, if the, if the right of way for that second lot that they bought is still in existence, they still have to write one, even though they're not gonna use it.
Yeah, I would, I, I don't believe there was, I don't believe there was...
So you have to check their deed and get a quit claim to have them release that.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like that's the, the, you know, the one they have legal rights to based on the notes here, but... Okay, yeah, so I'm able to take one of these?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. And what about, what's your intended timing for being able to...
Pretty damn quick.
Are you...
We have to have everything together for March town meeting, basically, so we can present and settle back to the town people.
Okay. So with this initial concept, do you want an initial stab at, at poss? I mean, they're, they're not as good as when you're further along.
That would give us a ballpark right here that probably...
Unless your initial concept, basically, you're, you're, when you first get into this thing and you say, you know, you do a site visit and you say, this isn't happening. You guys, you guys can't do what you wanna do.
Right.
Obviously, it doesn't make sense to go any further.
Right.
But I think the likelihood of that is really slim.
Me too.
Yeah. And if you wanna do a site visit, so just get...
Okay. Cause it's... Do you wanna do a, I couldn't swing there tonight?
Do a test to get on that one.
Do you want?
Give me, give me three minutes, we'll go.
Okay. Sounds good.
Awesome.
All right. That's, that's what I have. Any other questions?
I'll leave a card with... Oh, yeah, but you got many emails you can forward?
Yeah.
And I'll pass along to the rest.
I'll get John out of here as quickly as possible, so you guys can go.
Go do your thing.
Visit the pit. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right. So where are we at, guys?
Well, that's our question.
Well, I'll start my question. Are we good with paving?
We're good with paving.
Are they paving, right?
Yes.
I sent all the contracts back to them.
Okay.
But I have had a date from them and I need a date, because I have another black people on the street.
Yeah. But that being said, um, it would be, I know with extras and orders and that type of thing, if it were me, I would only pave a short apron on Overlook Ave, as much as this pains me to say this. Because...
I think we signed for everything.
For everything.
Have we made an agreement with the Stetsons on where the easement is gonna go and the turnaround?
Nope. No, we just signed what was given to us and with the prices and all that.
Okay. Moving right along, the...
So obviously that's something that we need to do?
Well, from what I understand, there's potentially gonna be two house lots out at the end of Overlook. So for the town to improve the, the amount of road that is needed to where the Stetsons would like the road to end, would need a road improvement. Normally the...
Yeah, I don't think that's what's...
Hold on, excuse me please. So normally what we would do is have the builder increase the, would improve the road condition. So where it ends now... So where it ends now, it's in his property, so there's a bit of a little snag right there. So if it were me, I think I would. I think I would maybe just pave the apron, and we gotta get this sorted out, because to pave a new road to have two houses built at the end of the road is gonna tear that little road up, in my opinion.
Well, even though we paved it, we were gonna do an apron there, it's up to the homeowners to do the rest of it, right? If they won't pay for it, or pave the driveway.
The, the majority of the road is in the Stetsons' property, so we need to come to terms of where the road ends and where, where it stops. I know where it's coming to stop right now is basically gonna be his lawn. This, this is, when I went out there to visit, I, I, I didn't understand why they wanted the road to go even further down the line, and then I said, is this gonna be two house lots? He said, that wasn't our intention at this time, but that's the only reason why you would do it. So I, if, if somebody wants a second house out there, then they need to improve the road to get it, and then that's where the hammerhead would be, or the.
The eventual, yeah. So do we even wanna go with the, that apron, or just back that apron?
That's something the board, I mean, I think.
Does it any advantage?
I think, I think we need to make a phone call to Mrs. Stetson and find out just, just what's what.
Alright, can we just invite him to the next meeting?
Yeah. I'll take that merge.
The beach house is complete, there's a walk in the door where the pump is, that's ready to go. When we opened it up, there was only one roll of toilet paper in there, so I don't know who was responsible for toilet tools, soap, that type of thing. The new mower is still being worked on. I think we put a grand total of eight hours on it, ten hours on it, and the steering pump, hydraulic pump, whatever, failed on it. That is that all in all, under warranty work. Everything has been mowed at least once, some twice. We have three thousand gallons of liquid kelp seed on hand that was delivered last week, so when, with rain coming and weather is adequate for putting on kelp seed, we've been doing so. We also, we've already put out some, the general public has been very happy with that. We just received the new edges and so forth, grader cutting edges for the grader, so we have those in inventory. We went through two sets immediately since the spring. The gravel roads are very hard just because of the kelp seed that we had put out the year before, and with the sand and salt mix, roads have been very, very hard, making, making edges wear even quicker. Kenny Clark has gone down into the town pit and organized it and is preparing for the crushing. We are in, as you all know, we didn't add any gravel to our county roads last year. When we take the road grader out, we're commonly hitting road-based gravel, it's very, very, very frustrating and very hard on the grader. So when we do have our gravel, we're either gonna have to put it out on the roads or purchase some. But that being said, as we all know, during the mud season, on Tucker Mountain Road, we ended up putting a lot of stone above where the school bus turnaround is uphill towards Eric Johnson's house. We're gonna have to put some gravel on there because there's just so much stone that we put in there, there's no way we can mix it or blend it.
Can't create it.
So with that being said, I'd like to grade Tucker Mountain, Tucker Mountain is probably is the roughest gravel road in town right now, so we either have to purchase it or wait for it to be made in-house. Now, with that being said, I'd like to ask where our truck is that the town approved.
Being built.
A town meeting is being built. Do we have any ETA on that truck?
Roughly, last I heard, roughly August.
End of August, so do I purchase gravel to put on Tucker Mountain, or do I wait for the truck and do I wait for crushing? It's all kinda works together, the truck, the gravel.
I'd say give us a price on what you need to purchase.
You need six loads of gravel.
I think what?
Figure is six times three hundred.
Eighteen hundred bucks.
Yep, two thousand.
I'd say, I'd say order your gravel.
Okay.
I'm assuming they're gonna take care of the roads to the right of the water?
Right, and those. Ease up some of the questions.
Six loads. Need to do, okay. I'd like to put a ad in the somewhere, put an ad out, that we'd like to hire help, the highway department does need help. There's just so much that we need to do, but without the truck, I mean, we should put an ad out there for a grader operator, we need to, we, we need help.
Is this in addition to, or we're, or replacing some of them?
I would, I would, I would place the ad, then we can talk about that. And I think we need to look at the pay rates for the employees.
We already.
It's something we need to review.
We already did, and everybody got their pay increases.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, when we, the timeframe for looking at it is when we do budgets, and then subsequently after everything is approved and we sign everything, so we just did that like two meetings ago, so we'll have to, you know, wait again until March, but everybody did get an increase of, in the highway department, three percent.
And then be back towards, for, you know, town meeting, but there won't be the day we signed it or if we need to check.
Right, so it's retroactive.
It'll be retroactive back.
Yep.
I, I think, I think that's it.
So this ad that you want placed, grader operator, anything else?
C D L.
Basically, the ad we had before.
Okay, same here.
What is it?
I had added part-time temporary help to do the cemeteries to tonight's agenda.
Yep, that'd be good.
Okay.
Something.
We don't, we didn't budget that.
Yeah, but it comes out of the cemetery.
We didn't budget, we didn't budget, the cemetery isn't budgeted.
I know, but there's six thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars budgeted for the labor. And if you're paying two eighteen-year-olds to do part-time temporary work a couple days a week, you've got that in there.
I, I would, I would get, only, I, I, I would wanna send them, just run the ad. Trust me.
No, I'm confused, I feel like we're not talking openly.
You're not, you're not.
So just run the ad and then we'll decide after, if, see what we get for.
You, you need the help, but you're not gonna find the help.
I, I agree with that one hundred percent.
You're, you're not, you're not gonna get it. So one of the things you, you have to look at is, maybe, 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 maybe somebody, maybe somebody will, but I, I mean, I've been running an ad for six weeks.
For January?
I, I had one across the road, and I had one, and he worked a week, and said I got some of them somewhere else.
It's, it's very frustrating out there, so anyways.
Yeah, I understand.
It's something that we need to.
Yep.
Need to do.
Yep.
Or need to figure out something. I see Arch just came in a little bit ago, and on Thursday afternoon, the states, the state, the state sign shop called and said that the signs would be ready on Tuesday, so that is tomorrow, so we can pick up the signs on time this week, maybe if it's raining tomorrow morning, I'll send one of the guys down with the, the signs. We will start on the Island View Beach House, is it called Lakeview? The Lakeview Pump House, I'm sorry. As soon as we can.
Okay.
But the beach house was a huge milestone.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Electric company came, hooked up the electric, you know, on the pole, that been done?
They, they, Tony called me and said everything was done.
Electric and all, that's all Ethan's been in.
I believe so. Have you been down there?
I haven't been down.
I'll go check it out later.
No, they, they said everything was done. One thing that we do need to do is probably have this up, they couldn't pump it out, because I don't know if anybody knows when the last time that was done.
Okay.
So with that being said.
Okay.
What do you have for me? Where can I better myself? Where do I need to invest my efforts? We've been just kinda doing the, the necessities out there.
Well, you're working your tail off.
Yep.
What I need from you is for you to contact Nick, and I need his availability so I can set up the meeting.
Yep. And.
Nick?
Rodig.
Rodig.
That's it, that's all you get for me.
Yes, you're doing an awesome job, we appreciate it.
I did, on a good note, you got a lot of pro bono in the town meeting over today. I did a swamp paving job down West Regulator, my company did, and we had approximately two ton of hot top mix, and we put it out on town roads, all on Bay Road.
Bay Road needs it.
Yeah, and if you could just contact Jeff and see if we get a, if we can get a firm date from him.
Who?
Jeff, through Arndy.
Yeah, just this word.
We need to notify the town that things are gonna happen, especially North Road, that we gotta notify those individuals.
But we, we should need to talk about Overlook.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
We gonna do it on Thursday?
No, no.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. No.
I haven't seen yours like that.
So can I just talk to Arch for a minute?
Sure. I'm sorry, I didn't schedule, I didn't know when you.
I am assuming that you're here regarding Mary's email.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't gonna come, but then I thought, no, we got to resolve this, it's getting back.
When something like that happens, you have to contact Inover PD, we can't do.
No, I understand that, but the problem is, is that there is no notification yet.
Well, the signs, John just said the sign will be here.
Right, so because there's no, no notification.
He can still use that road, you can't close that road, Arch.
We can close it for repairs, you can close it for repairs.
But he's, we've sent you the letter saying that he's still working down there, so we can't, we really can't close it.
Well, that's what I wanted to address, Todd. The statute clearly says that repairs must be made, and you must make them. Now, the fact that he chooses to continue logging doesn't exonerate him from making repairs, it's simply, at some point, he's got to make those repairs. Now, his vague comment about doing some logging in some distant future date, to me, doesn't fly, I, I, I don't think that that's the way to go about this. I think that the selectmen have the authority to point out the statute, hold of the statute, and say, no, this has got to be repaired, it's got to be repaired now. If somebody else goes down that road, okay, and if it's not closed, then who's to say what further damage is caused by that individual versus Karen? So if you don't close it, there could be all sorts of traffic, and they're simply going to add to the damage that's already there. My solution, which I think is very fair, is that, you know, we're fine if he still has to log, but close the road so that there's no further damage, post the signs, and what is to keep him from just sayonara someday and not finishing up with the repairs? That's why a bond is crucial.
We are not legally allowed to require loggers to bond, we don't have a bond, we have been going back and forth with this since the day we stepped foot as select people. We are, by law, not allowed to mandate loggers have, be bonded versus everybody else, so we either have one blanket bond policy for absolutely everybody, which has proven itself to be absolutely impossible, or we don't have one, so ultimately, we don't have one, and we cannot by law.
Have you checked with the, your attorney?
We have, and we have checked with other towns, we have checked with the municipal association, we have, by all means, done our due diligence.
Okay, alright, that, that's fine, so how do we ensure that the repairs are gonna be made?
We keep on them as the best we can do.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be here, so how do we empower future boards?
It's all, it's all in minutes and things, so it's.
Well, Todd, you know, I do that.
He still has to follow through, no matter if he.
Sure, Jeff.
So my other thing is, if he is aforesaid from now, he still has to bring that road back up.
You got any thoughts on this, Mr. Road Agent?
If, is this a new lot that Chris is working on, a new logging area?
It's the other end of the one he was on, I believe. Plus, plus he has two, he says he has two, and I don't know the people up there.
There's only one lot, okay.
But there's another individual, he's not working for Donovan's.
He's not working for Donovan's?
I think one of them is, but then he's working with one of the other individuals in that same area.
So then, in, in all fairness, before the second intent is signed, he needs to be good.
We can't, by law, we cannot withhold signing an intent to cut, we have to sign them as they're presented to us, they're tax documents, that's all they are, they're not permission to cut.
Right.
They're tax documents, we have to sign.
So.
We have no, we have no jurisdiction, no authority over any of this.
Nobody.
We are as frustrated as you are.
I, I disagree, I, I absolutely disagree, I've read the statutes, you've got very, very broad powers, you've got the power to restrict weight limits on roads, you've got the power to temporarily close them, you've got the power to restrict to one lane, you've got, you do have the power, Michelle.
But we can't close a road if he's to, and disrupt his business.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
If we close the road, yes, that's what we're doing, because he's told us that he's going to continue logging on that road for another year.
When?
He said he's up to a year, that's what he's given us for.
So how, how are we to?
I'd say at the end of the year, if he, you know, come spring, if it's not fixed, then yes, he'll have to step up and fix it.
Okay, so how do we prevent further damage to it by other people?
How would you do it if somebody went down there now?
That's.
I mean, prior, I mean, prior to him doing his logging, if somebody went, if somebody went down there four-wheel rig, what do you do?
My point is, is that the enforcement of that statute has to come from you, the repairs must be made. Now, we can argue about when those repairs should be made, but I think the statutes pretty much indicate that he's on the fence to do that before he does anything else. If he wants to continue to log, fine, if he does damage again, then he repairs it again. Why are we being asked to wait for those repairs until some time in the future? We don't, we don't know when that's gonna be, and why are his wishes superseding the statutes here, or your ability to, to enforce? You know, that's our frustration at the time, is that this individual says, well, I'm gonna continue to do this and that, and that's it.
Well, it's not right.
Well, it's not, but the other piece, and that I see too, is, it's a, is a cost factor to him repairing it every time.
So what?
Plus, plus the lawn, that, you know, that's, that's a town road, basically, by rights, and the lawn was, you know, pretty much grown over the town road, or input over that, the way we understand it.
Wow.
So.
Cart and horse. Cart and horse.
That's, you know.
The, the right-of-way consists of a traveled way.
Right.
Which is, uh, on a paved road, it's the paved surface.
Right.
The traveled way up there for hundreds of years has been that narrow strip.
Right.
Which has always been grass. It's never been gravel. It's never been paved. It's always been grass. It became the extension of the property owner's front lawn. I mean, that's just, you look at it and say, oh yeah, that's a front lawn. We recognize the right of individuals to travel on that traveled way. What we would like to see is to have people respect the fact that we need some sort of setback, okay, from our front door for safety reasons, more than anything else. And if what you're saying is that the right-of-way is usable all the way up to our front door, then we got a real problem.
I don't think I've been saying.
No, nobody's saying anything.
Well, that's what you are saying.
No.
Then where, then where are you drawing the line between what the traveled way is and the setback?
That's whatever the size that road was back when it was established originally. Just like, just like any other road.
Well, if you look at it that way, the, the, the right-of-way consists of from stone wall to stone wall. Our house just happens to be in that right-of-way, just the way it is. And it's been that way for, since, since, uh, Danny Fenton was telling me that they used to haul waggon loads of hay up through there with horses. Um, they always stayed on that traveled way. It's, it's well-defined. So why does anybody need anything wider than that?
Is anybody asking for anything wider than that?
Karen is. Half an hour ago, he comes up, uh, the sawhorses are in place. Instead of stopping, removing the sawhorses, what does he do? He drives up on our lawn.
Okay.
And that's when you need to call Andover PD.
Then that's, And why would you tell them?
And that's clearly,
That's what happens. Just right.
Exactly what you just said.
And you can keep driving on your lawn and they will come to Karen.
But according to you, it's not our lawn. It's a road.
No, no, we're just,
No.
Only that, that segment, as you said, clearly defined from the stone wall out, which is maybe what, 20, 25 feet or whatever it is? That's, that's.
No, it's, it's, it better not be 25 feet.
I don't know what it is, Arch. You know, I don't have a tape measure on me, alright? But I, we, we know what, we know what that road is. As you said, it's clearly defined.
So we do agree that there's a traveled way there that people should stay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
That's,
What he, what he did today.
We're not saying what he did today is right, my opinion.
Is right. Nobody said that.
How do we, how, there's no statute to enforce that. What's the, what are the police gonna do?
Well, that, that, you have the exact same problem if somebody decided to drive across my yard.
Yeah, or mine, and I call Andover PD.
You call the police.
Your lawn is not in a right-of-way, nor is yours.
My lawn actually is in the right-of-way.
John, do you have a thought?
You, the, I think, in all fairness, nobody has a problem with Chris cutting and earning a living. Nobody's, nobody's trying to challenge that. The original, the original course of Chris cutting and going through that way was because of the steepness of the hill. Uh, I, I can't remember the, the property owner's name, but it was more, it was safe for him to use that access. But now if we're gonna be logging on somewhere else on that hill, is it easier for them to come up through Route Four, up through Bissin's? So, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is,
I think he would have looked at the, knowing the situation.
Well, I, I, I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud.
Oh, I understand.
So if, I mean, one job is done, I believe, now we're going to a second job. In, in my opinion, and don't take this the wrong way, I, it really doesn't matter to me one way or another, but when I do a job, I finish it. The second job is a new job, so that's a whole new deal. And I think what Arch is saying is,
I agree.
The first deal should be done.
Mm-hmm. Including the restoration of the road back to its original condition.
And maybe,
As the statute stipulates.
And, and maybe there would be more consideration and possible damage, so it wouldn't be as impacted the second time that Chris had looked there. Am I turn, am I understanding what you're saying?
We don't, Mary and I do not have an issue with him continuing, or anybody, continuing to use that traveled way. Uh, I shouldn't say it that way. We don't have a problem with Chris continuing to use it, provided there is a ironclad guarantee, somehow enforceable, that those repairs are going to be made immediately after he finishes, and we need a date.
And there's the rub, the somehow enforceable. Right? So.
You enforce it.
It,
With a gun?
But, but why is it not?
You know, John, we, we've sent, we've sent the letter. We've told him what's expected.
Right. And you have the obligation to enforce the stat, that's your job as, as governing body.
Right. And so now, if he's not doing it, we follow up with a legal recourse, a letter from the town attorney with respect to the ramifications if he doesn't.
I'm not sure that he really understands.
I'm sure he does. I'm sure he does.
Well, if, if, if he does, then he's taking advantage of every.
Either that or he's just willfully not complying.
So what do you do about that?
Exactly. What do you do about that?
Do you not find him, stop further logging operations until?
And I don't know that that's a legal option for us.
I don't know either.
Right, right.
March, do you have any knowledge of any of this? But for him to say, gee whiz, I've got a future logging operation out there and at some future date, I'll do what I need to do, is, is really wrong.
It is very wrong. I go back to, you know, and I agree with John's prior statement. You know, this is a job and you finish it.
Right.
And part of finishing that job is, includes bringing the road back to its condition. That was an obligation that that just,
Right. So why allow him to continue logging? Using that?
Well, now we're going back to Michelle's point. You can't stop him legally from doing that, even if he has a prior obligation that he failed to meet.
And, and part of the reason why Chris,
We can't stop him from doing that.
And part of the, now, here's the other side of the point.
I don't write the law.
Part, part, part of the reason why Chris has to fix the road to begin with is because it was wet, it was winter, you know? There was mud, so Chris has to repair that. In Chris's defense,
Yeah.
It's dry. There's no mud. Is it really getting worse other than driving on the roots of the trees?
Right.
But it wasn't fixed.
That, yes, I mean,
You know, kind of beginning of sentence. Yeah, I agree. Period. Yeah. It's interpretation and it's all kinds of things, so we need to talk. We'll get, um, the town attorney involved because,
Our attorney, Paul Alfano, has been very helpful with us on this and, uh, I've, I've spent a bunch of money so far on this and, uh, um, I'm not gonna go ahead with this, but there is a legal thing called mandamus, which is we command. Where you get a court order to, to force a governing body to enforce the statutes. Um, it's tricky, but, um, it's a tool at the disposal of a property owner. You don't get any satisfaction at the local level. That has a bad taste in my mouth and I don't wanna do it and I'm hoping that.
They're often not successful because it's very easy for a municipality to prove that they've done a due diligence with respect to contacting and so forth and so on, so.
So, what I would,
At the end of the day, I'll reassure you that this team, myself included, wanna work with you, your wife, your family, your neighbors, and we wanna work with Chris Karen. So it's a balancing act.
I'm sure.
And, and at times it may seem unfair or, but at the end of the day, we all have to work with each other something reasonable. So, believe me when I say this, Arch, we want to work with you. We want everything to go smoothly and we all agree to that, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
And at this point, I think the best thing for all of us is to get our attorney involved so that he can help with the interpretation and letting us know how we can enforce some of this. I'm gonna say something that's probably kind of off what you just said, and I appreciate that, Michelle. But in the meantime, I'm outside watering. And it becomes and a manly goes. And, you know, are you kidding me?
So what are you gonna do?
What, what is this gonna end?
Well, what are you gonna do when my grandkids are out there? There's no, you can't see over that road.
No, you cannot.
Huh?
No, you can't.
Our responsibility.
That's, you have to call, you have to call Andover PD. Andover PD came to our house one day and they said, you know, we, we get it, you know? We're with you. This is completely unenforceable. You know, there are certain things that we agree, but we can't.
I'm sorry, there's something, there's gotta be something enforceable when there's a defined road.
Right.
That's clearly in front of you.
So what's there?
And if you're driving off that road into somebody's yard, which he clearly did, right, then,
Yes.
Well, what charges are there?
But what do you, what do you talk?
I have a, I do have a solution.
Stone wall?
Huh?
A stone wall?
Yeah.
About close.
Here's a stone wall that's across the way.
Mm-hmm.
Here's the traveled way. Okay?
Yeah.
Here's our house, right there. Here's our lawn. There's a fence that's gonna go in like this. It doesn't bar traffic. The law says that I have the right to erect a fence as long as it's, uh,
Open.
That defines.
And if it's not, you know, if the town doesn't maintain that road in the wintertime, they don't have to worry about snow.
Right.
Snow clearance.
To me, that,
It can't be in the right-of-way. That's right. We don't know what that is. Then we have to define what that is. And it.
To me, that defines.
No, no, what you're saying, the, so each road has a right-of-way that extends beyond the road surface.
Well, we can check with, we can check with Matt about the fence as well.
Can your property go all the way to the stone wall?
Court?
Does your property go all the way to the stone wall?
Well, the, the, the law says that the right-of-way, the easement that goes over private land, the private land is divided, uh, down the middle of the right-of-way, so half of it is ours, half of it is, uh, Dean Barker's. I, I can put up a fence and I don't need permission, as long as it does not bar the public. That's discontinued subject to gates and bars.
Right.
So I can go ahead and do that.
You can't, you can't gate it. You just can't lock it.
Correct. I'm not gonna gate it. I'm just gonna define the area.
Yeah.
And I don't see a problem with that, and I think that that works, that should work for Chris. He only needs a truck width. That's all he needs.
Right.
But that's kind of a separate subject, is it not, from bringing back the,
Totally separate.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
No, this, I'm just offering this as a,
So he doesn't go around the stuff again, but, but that's one thing. But what, there are two arguments. You can't go around the sawhorses or whatever they are, but you also, by statute, need to bring back what you damaged.
That's right.
Right. So there are two things.
Yeah, I think, I think Arch is saying that that negates the first point at all.
Okay.
No.
That still needs to be done.
Alright, well, that, you know, we wanna work with you. I think the most important thing for Mary and I is communication.
Okay.
Um, prompt communication so that we know what you guys are thinking and.
That's the other thing. Can we know when this is gonna happen? All of a sudden, we're out there, you know, and these trucks are coming down. And we, a lot of times, we don't know either.
We don't know.
That's, we have no idea.
And that is, it's public roadway, so no, no.
We don't. It seems like common courtesy, okay.
Right.
We usually don't know until you guy, you guys tell us. We don't know. Alright. Arch, I need to get that. Um, thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm gonna follow her out.
Okay. Look, he drives like a lot again.
No, don't know him. I'll tell you, Arch.
Even if they don't do anything, call the PD every single time because then at least there's a record of it, right? So there's a, well, no, they've been up there twice, right?
Okay. No, he's never.
Anything on that road, needs to be,
Because of the,
Registered.
Okay.
Okay, that's another issue. Is there?
Anything that travels on a town road,
That's true.
Needs to be registered.
Okay.
Even if it's class six.
So you're just leaving it at that?
Pays taxes to be on that road.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, well, uh.
Hey, that's your business. We're not the policemen.
Yeah.
Is it skiddered, Arch?
They should be.
Yeah, it's tracked down the road.
Yeah. Gets tracked down the road.
I just have to do one other thing. Sorry for your loss.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I sent you a little message on your phone, so.
Oh, thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks.
Good night, Arch.
Good night.
Covid, you're getting a recall with the contract. Moving, Michael.
I emailed the owner of the painting company last week. He is sending us another contract and told me to just continually quote him. Okay, perfect.
Me too. I guess we just did that one.
I guess we did.
You have to understand his frustration. I,
Oh, we do.
I did, but.
If I keep those, It's not easy. Bazooka instead of coming in with, you know, to say, let's talk about this. Because they love it for bear.
That's a good.
There's just only so much we can do.
Yeah, we're,
Yeah.
I mean, he's gotta be frustrated, you know?
He is.
I'm sure of it, but.
I'd be going through the roof if somebody drove on my lawn instead of getting out of their vehicle and moving sawhorses that were legally there and he's been told, Chris has been told that those are legally there and he's to get out and move them.
It's, it's, it's not us he's really bad at. It's the other part that's playing with him, and that's what it is. He's being tormented.
Well, and he's looking for enforcement, quite honestly.
Right.
Right? And unfortunately, there, there's a limit with, with, what we can do.
Little bridge.
No more bridges.
What was it? Beaver deceder?
No, I said no more bridges.
Oh, yeah, all.
I can't, I can't. I sent you,
Can I just leave that camera on?
Yeah, you did send it. I did send it, yeah, yeah, okay. That's all. Royal Tanner is kinda wondering. Well, we're still waiting for numbers from that. Okay, that's what Alita and I were talking about today. Okay. Alright, I'll make sure you got them.
And he, they should know that because Alita was supposedly told them that.
Okay. Yeah, it was one of the meetings where,
Yes, when you were up, we had to discuss on the chief contact, yeah.
Valley Road.
Okay.
Okay, so, Valley Road. Anybody take a look at it lately?
I have not.
We shoveled the, uh, catch basins. I got an email from somebody at Hillis, said the catch basins were sloping with silt and leaves and we opened those up today. I didn't, I didn't drag down because it was just, the catch basin thing again.
That's just on the hill.
Yeah.
Before the first bridge.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So we're talking about the second little bridge.
With the beaver deceder.
With the beaver deceder. Is the water still equally high on both sides?
I haven't been down since the drop cold.
Right, I can't, I can't imagine it's gonna be drastically different.
Well, Skip was here and trying to do some fixes. And he said,
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and first of all, I'm gonna preface this by saying, I am passing along information, okay? So nobody biting their head off. He said that, um, it absolutely needed to be completely howed out, cleaned out. He was going to try to, um, clean it out a little bit by hand, but he strongly suggested bringing a backhoe with a thumb down and,
Permit.
Pulling it out. Um, pulling it up. I'm passing on information. He also has, you know, a plan to update it and make it bigger, to make it work for that location if that's the route we choose to do. I'm just passing along the information. Um, so with that being said, I have not been down to check since he was here, was it last weekend he was here? Or two weekends ago?
Two weeks.
Um, two Saturdays ago. He is not any, around for the month of June. He is in Alaska. Um, So that's all I have to pass on for information. We should probably check it out.
As the road agent, I would ask this, and this is gonna be last time. If anybody's gonna be doing game work on town roads, they need to schedule it through the town hall so people know when and where they're gonna be working on town roads.
Hmm.
There needs to be signage, safety equipment, because I got a disgruntled homeowner called me on Emery Road that there was a man with out-of-state plates that was working on a culvert pipe, and for hours on end, he was out in the canoe cleaning up the area. And he said, "If this ever happens again, I will file suit." He was furious. So there needs to be...
What, what's he about, suit?
I don't understand.
All the debris...
Yes.
In this beaver deceiver, he just pushed it down through the pipe. So then it went out into this pond that has a dam.
Oh, oh, I know where you're talking about. Okay, yes, that, yeah, that, yeah, okay, yeah.
For hours picking it up, hours and days. And, um...
Yeah.
So that's, that's another thing. So if you're gonna be cleaning these things, what are you doing with the debris, right?
You can't just shove it, you just can't throw it.
I know what to him. He just said it was coming back.
I know this much. I cannot silt the water. I cannot disrupt the waters. So if we're gonna be silting the waters, cleaning these things, shouldn't there be DES involved? And if this thing is in such dire need of being cleaned, why wasn't it done last fall when it was really needed so it didn't wash out our road? And where did all the debris go that he cleaned?
So, I have... I don't know. Should we have this discussion right now?
It, it could be deep.
Pun intended. This is a long discussion, and I did talk with Skip for a long time while he was here. And as we are frustrated with the Conservation Commission for their lack of participation in the beaver deceivers, I'll just leave it at that, he is equally as frustrated with the Conservation Commission. It was also his understanding that they were to be doing some sort of monitoring, um...
Which I think they are doing, but...
They, if they are, they are not notifying anyone of anything, and they're not doing anything about it.
In the meeting.
It's nothing has changed since then.
Okay.
So they don't communicate with him, they don't communicate with us. Um... No matter what route we take with beaver deceivers as a whole or individually, if we look at them individually, something needs to change in terms of how we take care of them, the maintenance, who's responsible for them, the communication. It sucks. There is no... There's no plan, there is no action, there is nothing.
So in the end, I think what you're, what you're saying is that for our next municipal-wide voting chance, we have a cohesive plan outlined and its costs associated. So that says, all right, if, if we are to keep these things, this is what it's gonna take, this is the additional budget that these require.
And action.
And, and, and actions, right, and bodies. John's brought up many times, right? If we've got people hanging on and climbing down off a roadway into, into a body of water to, to clean these things, what liabilities does the town take on when, when that kind of work is being done?
Right.
Okay? Now, let's, did you not real, realize the, the silt problem, right? That, that's a whole nother issue apparently that we have to worry about. So we need, we need a cohesive plan with all these details, outlined exactly what it's gonna take to get, to maintain these things. What's the cost? Who's gonna do it?
Right.
And propose it to the town. If the town says, "No way," then I guess they, then, just as they voted to put them in, the town will vote to take them out or to maintain them properly.
Were they voted to be put in or were they just put in?
I think, wasn't there a vote originally to acquire the funds to put them in?
Nope.
No?
The first one was to, uh, Nancy, Nancy Caplan, Ragged and a bunch ladies, seven twelve.
And the Conservation Commission paid, yeah.
And it was on the Obol Pond Road because, um, they didn't want, the homeowner wouldn't allow us to trap the beaver. We were going up there, we had two days, and I voted in it. So they donated it, and at first it worked. But just like anything, you don't know how it works ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road.
And here we are.
Right.
And here we are.
I need a regular service in...
Well, and, and Skip was honest enough to say that he realizes that it's through time and through observation that he realizes some of these things need to be resized for the location. For the physical location and the size of the bridge, or the size of the waterway, that, the size of the amount of water that needs to get moved through these things. He, he understands that, you know, it was an educated guess, a best guesstimate as what needed to go in there the first time, but some of these need to be resized. So... It all depends on whether or not the town wants to adopt this as a formal line item. And ultimately, who's going to do the work? Is that a, is that a road department? Is that a highway department thing? Because ultimately, these things are designed to help prevent and save our roads. So, and that makes the most logical sense. We don't have anybody else to do it. It's not like we can get the...
Well, you got homeowners doing it now on your own.
Right, and that's, you know...
A whole nother issue.
A whole nother issue is right, you know, let's, let's talk liability when somebody, you know, slips and falls and, you know, one of those pointed beaver sticks goes poking, pokes out an eye or, uh...
Right, because they're technically town property.
Divots their skull.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um...
You need some kind of structure just to, to at least keep things...
Just to be functional.
Yeah, balanced, where you put together a, a full and enforceable plan.
Yep.
Balance is... It's, it's one thing to, to maintain a beaver deceiver if there's a, a, a smaller population of beavers versus... There, there needs to be balance. And some trapping...
I agree with you one hundred percent.
Do you wanna talk about trapping and moving them?
Well, we did, so what we observed, what we observed last meeting...
Yeah.
Was, or it wasn't the twenty-fifth, it was a work, it was a work session. Um, when we went to the site, and what we saw was the water on the side of the beaver deceiver was at the same height as the water on the downhill. And what I didn't understand, and I asked John, what's causing the backup downstream that made that water level on the right side of the road...
Beaver dams.
As high as it was on the, the other side. So ultimately, the beaver deceiver wasn't causing really any problem. It was the water all the way back in on the other side. So we did, flooded on the other side, but it was all the same height. And what was happening apparently is there are, there are more than one.
So you, you had the chicken that crossed the road, but now you had the beaver.
Right.
So...
Right, and so we have a couple of dams downstream that are causing that total backup.
Oh.
Um...
It's a beast of a problem. It really is. It's, there's, there's just no... I still haven't figured it out.
Right.
I don't even have an opinion at this point. I just...
It's, it's, it's gonna be a combination.
It's so overwhelming.
John, do you happen to know if, if we know of, of beaver dam that's on somebody's property, right? So that...
And it, and it's potentially could do damage to a town road?
Right, can the town...
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Trap on that?
You can remove the dam also.
And we can remove the dam? Okay. All right.
They, and, and that, that's, I'm not gonna mention any names, but the town sent a formal letter, the board of selectmen, sent the letter to, to one of the people that was actually releasing the traps. We couldn't fix the problem because we couldn't trap.
Right.
And they, the selectmen said, "If this road ever floods, washes any damage, you will be held solely responsible for putting the road back into its condition." So then people went into pant mode, and then out became this beaver deceiver.
Okay.
That's how it all started.
In one location.
And, and then they just kept...
Snowballed from there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. But with respect to Valley Road, I think that we have a need to initiate a, a request for a trapper downstream and to remove those dams because that's creating the, the water problem all the way back to Valley Road. Let's start there.
Let Skip go to Valley and clean it up.
He was, he didn't think he was going to, so bad, he didn't think he was going to be able to do it all by hand. That's why he recommends a backhoe with a phone.
Pull that sucker out and clean it up.
Right. Not the case, not the case that's out there, just the one that's right by the bridge, I guess.
And then...
So how does one go about putting in a request for a beaver trapper? Everybody points to John.
In next year, he's done it.
For instance, last year we had a beaver problem in Aggie Hill. Was, then we had two small pipes, one that goes on, one state pipe, two town pipes all under the road. We trapped it, I think it was three beaver like that. Guess what? We haven't had a problem since.
Okay. Knock on wood, they haven't found it again. Right.
If I can trap those in the prison, we can kill them.
Deceiver already without a permit, but beyond that, you're gonna need state permit.
A state permit for the downhill dams?
No, not for the dams. For the dam, yeah, because it's not really causing misery right now. But you can trap the beaver. What I'm saying, if you can reach into the backhoe or remove the deceiver, but...
And you're on the...
Yeah, you're on that one, you know, there's nothing we can do.
Right, so if you can't reach the second one, you're done.
Yep.
Unless you get permission from the homeowner, which I bet you did on Emery Road.
Well, not, not so much the deceiver because that's enough. You can't reach out there and get that.
No, 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 so the, the dams downstream.
The dams downstream.
The beaver dams downstream, however many there are.
On that particular basis, I think you could get the permission from the homeowner. Because he, his fields are flooding.
What would you do, so if, if...
He called the state and he was told, "Leave the trap for me, remove it."
Right, now, so if you do remove those beaver dams, what do you end up doing with the material?
You just push it, push it to the left and push it to the right. So you can't haul it out.
Really?
Not, not way out there.
No?
Yep.
Yeah.
You would just bust it open because nothing's gonna fill it back in. If, if you trapped a beaver, if you open it up, nothing's gonna fill it back in.
Okay.
But he'll, he'll have issues in his field, that's, that's what.
Right.
That's why he was for...
Right. That's why I was worried, I was just worried, you know, if we leave the material there and somehow, you know, a big storm pushes it back into place.
No, it won't.
It won't, okay.
All right, we'll continue on.
Okay.
Planning board action items.
Um, yeah, so you all saw the emails. We've already taken, let me bring that up. Sent. I just wanna make sure that we have everything crossed up. And March, we're gonna need your help on...
So I go still with you.
Oh, God. Is he out there?
Oh, I don't know if he's still there.
Right, all right.
All right, thank you, John, so much.
I just remembered that.
Holy smokes.
Thanks, John.
All right.
Everybody's watching for that.
So action items from the planning board in no particular order. We, um, and I don't know if we need to vote on this in a, in a public meeting as opposed to a work meeting, but, um, so real quick, the, we have several members that are up for renewal of their appointments, and the members have requested, um, some, those members have been requested to complete an application or reapplication. Um, the, the question is, does the select or require the form for reapplication? Or would some other more simple method be acceptable? And I thought about this after the fact, and one of the purposes of the application is that you are stating that you have no conflict of interest, essentially, right? And so...
I thought of that after.
That, exactly, it was, it was an afterthought for me as well.
I got a lot of information on there that I really do need.
And, and, and it's unfortunate, you know, that, I mean, it's kind of a drag, but it's always been in there, and there was a reason why. It just took me a lot to figure out. And so it's that restatement that there's no conflict of interest of, you know, life, their life or their connection to other industries or businesses haven't changed so in the two years, and so there continues to be no conflict with the decisions of the board. So I think that we are going to continue to ask, um, members of the board...
It takes like five minutes, guys.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, I'm gonna go on.
But that, that was the question, that's, that's, that was what was being asked. Um, in addition to that, Randy Monti has informed the board that he's gonna be stepping down, um, as a, an active member. Um, and he's asked that the, um, the current alternate, Ken Wells, be appointed to, uh, as a member of the board. Planning board voted unanimously in that, in favor. Um, and then Randy said that he would step into the alternate position until an alternate, an, an additional alternate could be found. And so, uh... I'd just make a motion to accept, uh, Ken Wells as a full member and Randy as a alternate member.
I have the appointment forms for you to sign, and by signing, you're...
Thank you.
All right.
Fine. Thank you. Um, so that makes that official. And then, uh... Back in February and eight, um, we had asked that the town council be brought in to draft a cease and desist order for the activity going on Johnson Lane. Um, that was in those minutes, I'm hard to kind of place. Thanks. And, um, the planning board is asking, has that letter been sent? Is there a vote reply, and may they have a copy?
Yes, I have talked to Matt, and Matt... Let's be chill again, sorry.
I think that in the end, the request from the planning board is that we enforce the original approval of his site plan, which was really basic, and it just simply said, "There shall be, you know, there's, they remove any parking of any vehicles between the building and the road."
Yep.
Um, that, and that, and, and ultimately, if he needs to push out and for additional parking and so forth, I don't think the planning board had any issue with that, which, it was just the proximity to the road.
Okay. He says, "I understand that the previously proposed site plan and the planning board approval referred to five parking spaces around Building Three. The ZVA approval referred to this as well. Was this confirmed in the notices of decision from the two boards?" I don't have access to those, and I think that's what I emailed you, was that I, I don't...
Okay, I don't remember getting that email, and I apologize. So restate the question again?
"Was this confirmed in the notices of decision from the two boards?" They're supposed to do notices of decisions.
Right, and I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure those notices of, of decision simply say state, and they, they're not gonna be specific as to five spaces, right? Around Building Three, they're just gonna simply say that it's approved as amended or presented.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to say more than that, but, um, they probably don't. In the cease and desist order, he says "we," meaning he's going to do it with us.
Yeah.
Um, "We need to refer to the specific conditions of approval that are being violated."
Okay. Okay.
The bottom line for me is that the applicant asked for five parking spaces and got what he asked for. The fact that he needs more space is his problem, and he needs to get an amended site plan approval.
I do remember that.
Okay.
Do you? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I could send that in here.
Yep. And third, is there still a concern that the owner is operating outside, outside of the approved hours of operation?
Oh, there was some question.
Please send along the planning board notice of decision when you can, and I will prepare a draft cease and desist order.
Thanks. Tell me and see that tomorrow night.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so can you, can you forward that to me? I know you, I know you sent it, I just, I, I didn't fetch it.
All right, right now.
Okay.
There's your job, John, to remember to tell me.
All right, and then the last point, um, which we might have started earlier this evening is, uh, the planning board, uh, regarding the sales, uh, excavation and sales of gravel and stone from John Champagne, um, on Southbury Highway and Bay Road in accordance with section such and such of the excavation regulations. I didn't even know we had that. That the applicant, uh, will provide a performance bond to guarantee reclamation of the area in compliance with the permit and, and, and the inspections. And I included that reclamation requirements. It's about five acres. Um, and so basically, I don't know what that means. That, you know, ultimately, does that mean bringing in, you know, topsoil and trees and, and plants and so forth, and regrading back to its natural state?
Would it look like, I think, before they started?
Right?
It's really worth reclamation.
But I mean, you know, I don't know how that's possible, if somebody moves, if somebody moves, you know.
I think if you read the rest of this thing, it's harsh, it's a slope to such and such a percentage.
Okay. So ultimately, and then, uh, you know, if you grab it, and then you have to, yeah, loam and seed it so it doesn't.
Yeah, I think he's talking about.
It doesn't run off, and you, and you get some kind of leak system, whether it's shrubbery or trees or whatever, right?
Yep.
So. Five acres to accomplish that, is twenty-five thousand a sufficient amount of money to pull that off? Or should we ask for fifty thousand?
Well, when are you talking about this being done? I mean, because.
Quickly, he's, he's ready to go to business now.
So when John is all done with everything that he's gonna do, which I don't know how long, I forget how long he said he thought it'd be at it.
Quite a few years.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that comes after he's finished.
Absolutely, but the, the, the bond has to be in place.
Right, right, right away.
Right, right away.
Because he's ready to go.
Right, and then he, he's not gonna get the final approval until he gets the bond. And the question from the board is, what do the selectmen, if we had to enforce that, what kind of bond do we need to make that enforcement possible?
It's a performance bond. And if he's gonna be at it, like, five years, ten years.
Yeah.
You know, twenty-five thousand now is.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
And that, that's my point.
Yeah.
Right? So, and again, bonds are not very expensive at all.
Right, and if he doesn't use it, he doesn't use it at all.
Right. And, uh, it's relatively inexpensive insurance.
Yes, basically what it is.
I just think it's crazy that we're charged.
You know, you don't really know what you're gonna reclaim with.
But, so, you know, so, the, the, their point is, exactly, we don't know, you know, it, it's according to that plan, basically.
Yeah.
But ultimately, the select board would be charged with enforcement, right, just as we are charged with enforcement for anything. And so if the planning board said, without checking with us, twenty-five thousand, you're good to go, right? And then five years, we can't, we're not gonna be able, we're not gonna be able to accomplish the, the enforcement need that we need with a bond like that. That's why they're asking the questions. If, if our, if our responsibility is to enforce, what kind of, what kind of funds do you think? If everything went to hell in a handbasket, right?
Right.
What would you need? And I'm saying fifty thousand dollars for a five acre parcel to regrade, loam, seed, and plant whatever density is required by that, by that plan, you're probably gonna need fifty thousand dollars to do that.
Do you have the, does it have the slope?
Uh.
Cause it'll make, it depends if he's gonna haul in fifty feet of material. It's gonna make a huge difference.
I, and again, I. It's downloading.
Well, it's downloading, that just reminded me, uh, Jeff called me the other day. Jeff is John's brother-in-law. And they just want a small sign, so I told them that they need to do the sign paperwork.
Oh, yeah, the, a sign permit?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I told him I'd grab, grab that for him, cause it's just a piece of paper, right?
It's just an application, yeah.
Okay, um, so I have to grab that at some point, so he can.
I think it's on the website.
Oh, perfect, I'm pretty sure I'll tell them this right on the website, that'd be awesome, okay.
Erosion control notes, winter notes, um.
I think it's at the very top, if I remember right, and on the top left.
Reclamation notes, blasting notes, circle specifications.
Reclamation.
Reclamation notes. I can't, I'm gonna make this bigger. My assistant's having a convention fit here. There we go. Final grades shown here in are for planning purposes only and are subject to change dependent on the quality of material and the grading necessary for the final use proposed for the property. The long-term maintenance plan and construction monitoring plans shall be used in adherence to, uh, for, and for, uh, the continued use of the proposed gravel pit. So what's, rather than me reading all ten points, uh, I think this may be what you're looking for. Um, earthing cut to fill slopes should not exceed two to one.
Pretty shallow.
Okay, horizontal feet to one vertical foot to maintain stability. Um, and then it says, earth slopes over twenty feet in height may require benching, I don't know what that is, or terracing to divert concentrated stormwater runoff. Okay? Now.
So give me up the tiered up, basically. Yes, I'm gonna be more mild. If, you know, anything ever happened.
Okay.
Has anybody asked him? I'm sure he has a rough estimate of how much.
So.
And he's got, what, five acres?
Just, just a hair over.
I'd say put it at a hundred thousand if he's got a tiered up.
Okay. And that's. You know, again, you know, this is more of an insurance policy than anything.
And again, it's our best guess, basically, it's.
And it is our best guess. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I, I would not be surprised if that's what it takes for five acres. To, to make, to, to return that to its natural state, okay? Based on whatever changes he had made, um, or started with whatever changes he's made. And honestly, in the end, I don't, I don't think that that's, it's ever gonna come to that. Right, but, um, okay. So I will let them know. Do you have any input as to whether or not you feel that's, um, too high, too much, too low?
No, I have no clue.
Right, and that's fine, I, I, I agree.
I bet he's got an idea, though.
Yeah, I mean.
Who, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
I bet he knows.
Okay.
What he figures it would cost.
Okay. And last complaint, like.
Yeah.
You know, and that may just make, that may make it easier, you know, so that, A, it's not a surprise.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Town minutes report.
I don't really have one, I've been in and out so much that.
Business. Correspondence signatures.
Those just two batteries or something?
Well, no, the wheel is, is stuck, so no matter what document I send, it chokes it down to the bottom. I'm gonna get a new cordless mouse.
I had to buy my second charger cord for my computer the other day. My dog chewed it completely in half in the middle of my Lego training the other day.
Great.
Yeah.
What?
Is the dog still alive?
That's a good question. He is, it's the second one, these things cost eighty bucks a piece.
Yeah, it's a stupid Apple charger.
Oh.
Macintosh.
I love Apple, but yeah, I hear you, my cat, my cat did it to me.
Piece of correspondence is from Damian Whitter, Whittier over at Nun, because I had asked him if they rent, oh, yeah, kinds of trailers, um, that we would need, and he said, hello, Marge, sorry it took this long, but we don't rent those type of trailers. If I may ask, why are you looking for one? He's the one that told us it was so bad. If it would help, I could check it out for you and give you my honest opinion of the trailer.
I think he did it anyway.
That's what I thought. Let me know if I can help in any way. Enjoy your day, Damian.
Do you have past communications with him, from him?
I do, well, I do right here, um. Um, well, yeah, I don't have the one that goes back.
Yeah, it would just draw his attention to the original.
I did.
Yeah.
I did, I called him, and, um, he said, oh gee, I don't remember that, off the top of my head, but I said, well, I can send it to you. And he, no, 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 there was something about inspection, I tried to take it down, up road to have somebody look at it, oh. I do remember that. But he's the one that said it was so rusted, all of that. And then.
Yeah.
I think it was with the previous board. They had it backed in over by the kiosk. And the board, and I went and looked, and we had a lot of rust issues. And there were some tire, oh, wheel issues, I don't remember which it was. But I'll look back in those minutes and see, but anyway, they're not gonna be able to help us, so.
We should look at Gasol or something like that.
Wonder if we should look at Gasol or something like that.
Yeah.
Another, another provider.
Yeah, I think so, I'll just keep going. And the other, um, piece of correspondence is in regard to your letter about Medicare for All. Dear Mr. Goings, thank you for reaching out to me with your views regarding Medicare for All. Listening to my constituents is a fundamental part of my job as it helps me to best represent you and New Hampshire's priorities in Congress. I'm strongly committed to the goal of universal healthcare coverage. We must continue to protect and expand access to care, and I am dedicated to that goal. Medicare itself is a serf, is a crucial pillar of economic security for New Hampshire families. Granite State seniors have worked hard their entire lives as they raise their families, strengthen our country, and may pay into this vital program. Now more than ever, they deserve our support and the right to live with comfort and dignity. One of my top concerns in Washington is the survival of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, ACA. This legislation addressed many shortcomings in our health insurance system by barring insurance companies from charging people with pre-existing conditions more for their insurance. Prohibiting healthcare caps on patients with systemic conditions, allowing children to stay on their parents' insurance plans until they are twenty-six, and expanding Medicaid coverage to millions of Americans, including more than fifty thousand Granite staters. Although the ACA survived a July two thousand seventeen repeal vote in the Senate, it has already been weakened and remains under assault from the Trump administration and many congressional Republicans. I am focused on doing everything I can to preserve the important advancements achieved through the ACA. At the same time, I recognize that there is much we can do to improve upon the system we already have, including the ACA. I support policies to bring down the prices of drugs by negotiating with drug companies, increase transparency about hospital pricing, incentivize greater competition in the state exchanges to bring down costs, and provide greater premium support to younger Americans on the individual, on the individual market. I also think we should look into options to expand Medicare. Now we're getting to Medicare. In particular, I am interested in the possibility of allowing older Americans to buy into Medicare, which will not only increase access to coverage, but also improve the solvency of Medicare by bringing younger, healthier people into the system. However, I am concerned by any approach that would eliminate private health insurance. I feel we must focus our effort, efforts on how we can expand public coverage alternatives to the private market to improve quality, affordability, and access. Please note, excuse me, that I am reviewing a number of different proposals introduced by my Democratic colleagues in the House and will keep your thoughtful views in mind if I have the opportunity to vote on pertinent legislation. Thank you again for sharing your thoughts with me.
That's signed by?
That is signed by Ann McLean Acusper.
There you go. Okay.
And then, our signatures. I have another appointment that I didn't give to you because we weren't talking about this one. Um, Dave Powers', um, term on the planning board is expiring, so that needs to be taken care of. And Donna, yours isn't up until two thousand twenty-two.
Oh.
So you're, you're good.
Yeah, I think the website was where we were gathering some of that information, and then there were quite a few people that said twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
And like.
Okay. I'll change, I'll make sure that gets changed.
Yeah, that's.
That would confuse us.
That and the road.
Okay, is that there for next year?
I certainly am. Just. Just pack it away.
Yep. Thank you, Marge.
And this is a letter that the Friends of the Northern Rail Trail have asked for the board's support for funding that they're going after. Not anything from us, just, you know, that the rail trail is valuable.
Absolutely.
It is very. Have a payroll manifest. Actually, we have two payroll manifests, I guess, one on the. This is an intensive cut. Oh, our friend Old College Road.
Old College Road.
I can't wait to sign it.
Old College Road. So I, I, you know, and I was thinking about these intensive cuts, cause it seems like we have quite a few this year. And, if, you know what, with lumber price, seeing what they are, if you've got timber value to cut.
Damn, look at me.
Then that, that explains exactly why.
Yeah, it certainly does.
Right.
That's why. I don't mind sharing.
You do that. It's about time. Thank you.
This is an invoice for cleanup of Old Center Cemetery and Proctor Cemetery.
Wow. That's half the lot.
That's a big one.
That's a big one.
Who's flat is that? I don't know.
Well, who is your major? I don't know, but.
What was the name?
Signature on the corner.
Signatures on page two and three.
It's, 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 it's a hundred meters. Lot of wood. And that came in right exactly where the property is. That was great, I see. Okay.
Same thing, pages two and three.
So all, all that, all that wood, all that. So all that, all that wood, all that cut's gonna come down our newly paved road.
Yep, yeah.
Yep, yes.
When when libraries.
She doesn't need a bomb.
What? And he doesn't need a bomb, apparently.
When libraries go in, does anybody document the road look like before they start? Are the pictures taken or anything like that?
I don't know, if.
No, I don't think that happens, but is it listed to the town, so somebody can go and see the pictures?
Still can't enforce it.
If you get out, you can hear.
No enforcement to it.
Right, there's, I mean, you could, but it doesn't doesn't mean what you're doing about it. Intent to cut that he does every year. And another timber bill for one thousand seven hundred eighty-two, please sign pages two and three.
Paper cut, just get it in my bag. Mr. Irishin.
I thought you didn't have to do that for court work, does it? I didn't have to cut.
I didn't think so either.
You come to know how much a court word is, how many courts are, I think. If it's a horse, then that court you have to do.
And, well, and he's saying he's cutting twenty acres.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah.
He may be, he may do it, you know, so much years, I think.
Right.
And this is another timber bill for one thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars.
I know what you're saying, and it seems like I'm getting nothing up, but.
We're gonna go back to, I don't know.
That's a clip right there.
I didn't touch it. You sure it's not in here? I have no idea.
And that is the accounts payable manifest.
All right, this is missing a paper cut.
So, and is it on a table somewhere?
No. I tried to apply the shell to get the.
He did.
Wasn't even looking in his direction.
See if I have one whirling around at the bottom of my bag.
I'm fine with that.
That's really weird.
There you go.
It's weird.
Nothing, nothing. See? This? That's why I thought, maybe.
All right.
There it.
I knew it. Thank you.
Just a little piece for a while.
I haven't asked the leader lately, but she hasn't mentioned it, and I think she would if they had. It's almost July first.
That's ridiculous.
We need to get paid. Mm-hmm. And I know she's been after them at least twice, I think, three times.
And they got an actual invoice, so they can't be.
They do, yes.
They can't complain that they didn't receive anything.
They got that, yeah.
They're getting there, so.
And they have the money.
Mm-hmm.
So shall we consider just letting them find somebody else to pop next year? Okay.
Well, if they're not gonna pay their bill, heck yeah.
Yeah.
They can pay somebody else twice as much.
It's not like it's a big one.
Right.
Not compared to.
Not, but, but with, and then over there.
Exactly.
Got that right. This is a this is a statement from Clark and Company for earthwork. It's for twelve thousand dollars. He consolidated the gravel and rocks into a stockpile for crushing, as quoted, twelve thousand. And it's to be crushed, hasn't been diagnosed. And this is.
Does the police department have their new procedure?
They do, it's not, I don't think it's outfitted yet, but they they do have it, yes. This is, says it's a proposal, I think it's actually an invoice for two thousand dollars for the work done at the beach house, the electrical work.
I have, is there a recollection?
I thought we were gonna have a painting party.
Oh, we are.
Okay.
It's being.
Oh, the beach house. Can you go do my kitchen after that? I just got finished doing, well, Alan, I just got finished doing the bathroom. It looks so good.
Oh, good?
Yeah.
You have the, John, remember what we're what we signed for the electrician at the beach house?
Oh, we signed anything?
Yeah, we signed, we approved something for the electric, electrical. We was on the same.
Yeah.
Cause one was, Tommy's was the plumbing was five.
I don't remember going, yeah. However, I seem to remember that the, we had budgeted five, and then everything was coming in closer to seven, seven and a half.
I still make sure it was.
Yeah. But I don't know, is there anything, is there any other work that needs to be done? Cause we still haven't painted.
Just painting, but that wasn't part of.
That wasn't part, that wasn't part, we were gonna have a party to do that.
And that's gonna be.
Yeah, I'm having a party, we're all gonna watch, I think. And the last thing I have is
Tell property.
An invoice from Hoyt Tanner
Watch it.
For the design-based engineering services for Lawrence Street Bridge, and that is fifteen thousand four hundred.
That's still on track for its ETA?
As far as we know, it's hard to tell with the state, instead of moving everything all the time as far as dates go, but I haven't heard otherwise, so I'm assuming they're still looking at. And I forwarded you the.
I saw that.
Inspection.
Yeah.
The May inspection.
Right. The what I did, actually, I have to spend more time with it. Over the winter, we had an issue on that bridge. Where is that, that specific issue?
It's in the.
Okay.
I can't quote it too, cause I don't have it, I'm running behind it anymore. I know I forwarded it this morning.
Is it just a cover page?
Yeah.
I believe, that's it? That's a lot?
A lot, right?
Way more than we usually have.
Oh, it's a zip file.
But we still, it's like, down to eight, that's pretty impressive.
Oh, boy.
Not that, no, we're not that one. Don't get upset.
I kinda am, I haven't seen my kids yesterday.
We have due mom session. I rest eight ninety-one eight.
It's okay, I'm leaving.
Still has to say.
You just have to say, I need a roll call vote, please.
Yep, Michelle, I.
John, Kenny, I.
Take care, guys, good to see you. Good night. See you tomorrow, don't I, John?
Yeah.
Good night, Don.
Good night, Marge.